The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is brought to order on Monday, May 15th, 2017 at 7:00. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening reflects your interest in local education and is greatly appreciated. At this time, we'll start at 26017, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have two students from Edison Elementary School to lead us in the pledge. Would Christian King and Jacob Riordan please come forward?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So if you turn this way, Ms. Hines here is going to read your bio, so if you stand right here in front of us, and she's going to tell everyone a little bit about you, okay? So tell me, who's who? Who's Jacob and who's Kristen? Okay.
They both, so.
I'm Kristen.
Thank you. We were just going to figure it out along the way somewhere.
My name is Christian King. I am nine years old, and I'm in the third grade at Edison Elementary School. My teacher's name is Ms. Gorski, and my favorite subject is math. I have one sibling. I like to play baseball. My favorite movie is Napoleon Dynamite. I love dogs. My mom is my hero, and I love her spaghetti. I love spaghetti, too. And when I grow up, I would like to be an actor or a singer. So, Christian, who did you bring with you today? Is your parents here?
My mom, my dad, and my stepdad.
Okay, thank you. And now we have Jacob Riordan. My name is Jacob Riordan. I am eight years old, and I'm also in the third grade at Edison Elementary School. My teacher's name is Ms. Case, and my favorite subject is science. I like to play basketball, video games, and Legos, and I enjoy watching the amazing world of Gumball and Star Wars. My hero is my dad, and I like candy. When I grow up, I would like to be a veterinarian.
Okay. And Jacob, who did you bring with you today?
I don't know.
Did your little brother drive you here?
That's it, just a little brother.
Do they know he have license? Mr. Cox is going to come down here and give you two certificates, okay?
They also got their principal. He'll make sure.
Christian, Jacob, could you stand here with me, please? On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to thank you both for coming here and leading us in the pledge. You did an excellent job, and in recognition of this evening, I'd like to present you with this certificate suitable for framing, recognizing you. And Jake, this is a certificate from you. Just stand over here for me. And these guys, and your parents are where? You all for coming to support me, inspiring young men tonight as I led us in the pledge. Did you bring anybody else as your teacher or your principal?
Who am I?
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you, everybody. Excellent job.
So, Kristen and Jacob, if you go with Ms. Johnson, she's going to take pictures of you, okay? And just before we go into, if anyone, we have a few presentations this morning. At any time after your presentation, if you need to leave, you won't hurt our feelings. We would love for you to stay, but I understand if you have other activities you have to get to, so it's okay if you leave right after you get your presentations, but like I said, you are more than welcome to stay. So moving on to item number 261.17, roll call and attendance, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Hines, present. Ms. Madison.
Present.
Ms. Madell.
I'm here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 262.17, presentations, Dr. Harmala.
Yes, we're going to start off with Assistant Principal Denise Brennan from Wayne Memorial High School, who's going to introduce the Winter Percussion Group, who has a special award. And Denise, you can go up to the podium there if you like. There's a microphone there, and thank you.
I would like to introduce 12 of 18 amazing students at Wayne Memorial High School. They are part of our Winter Percussion Group, and what that is, is they go above and beyond. This is an extracurricular activity where this is not part of the band. They spend all their own time. They work with their main instructor, Mr. Andy Brookheisen, who they absolutely adore. I've been listening to them talk about him. He's amazing. And also with his assistant, Pat Brown, all completely under the direction, of course, of the wonderful Mr. Diroff, who we absolutely love. But this group, for the second year in a row, has won the state championship for the MCGC, and they are, I'm going to introduce them, so if you guys are here, I don't know exactly. I know I have 12 of 18 of them here. So I have Kiara Matiska, Gina Gunter, Zach Kuvalier, if you could stand up. Thank you. Audrey Saval, Monique Hendricks, Stephen Ambrose, Brett Robuck, Connor Radke, Karen Hernandez, Sydney Matiska, Diana Orsco, Justin Nicolai, Alex Sambroon, Gavin Vaughn, Cheyenne Kittle, Sierra Raymond, Caleb Anway, and Fabian Anez Ricardo. And these guys have worked so hard, and they deserve absolutely all the praise and happiness that they have, because they're just, they work really hard at this. And we would love to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Harmala for recognizing and supporting all of these activities at Wayne Memorial High School. Thank you.
And I know Jenny is going to do a group picture, and many of the folks here are the parents or support systems for the students, so.
Thank you to the parents, too. These guys are amazing, too. They're always, always, always here to help us.
And I know she's going to take the picture out in the hall, so I know we also have certificates, and Denise, you are going to hand those out to the students. You can hand them out out there would be fine. Okay, very good. Yeah, you can head out in the hall, and she'll take a big group picture, so thank you so much.
By the way, Matt, this is a good time for you to run up there and promote your upcoming concerts.
I would love to do it.
Yes, we would love you to do it. Come on.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
So, thank you again. Thank you for a moment. First, to recognize these outstanding students that we have here at Wayne. But also, we do have a concert coming up, a week from tonight, actually, the 22nd. We have our annual spring concert, which features our jazz band at Wayne and all of our band and orchestra students, so about 250 or so students will have our concert next Monday. And actually, for anybody who might be listening, either present company or listening online or watching online, we invite any of our friends or family who may have played an instrument sometime in the past to join us and play with us on our final number, which is "You'll Never Walk Alone." And last year, we were fortunate enough to have Mr. Weber come play triangle with us, which was fantastic. And so we certainly would invite all of you, any of you, to come and join us, and we could give you a triangle, too, if you might be so inclined and help you out with that. So thank you again. 7 o'clock is the concert time. Usually runs anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours with all of our groups who give out some special awards and things that night, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B.
Thank you. Back to me. I'll be doing the presentation on the update of the strategic plan, and there is one graphic that I'll refer to in your packet. You have the complete memo, so I'm just going to do some highlights. You adopted our strategic plan a year ago in June. I know it doesn't feel like a year went by already, but it has. And the goals for the first year of implementation included ensuring that instruction and related programs and services align with what we want our students to know and be able to do, that we assess and support the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students, that we ensure resources, support staff compensation, and that we determine the feasibility of a bond issue or other funding mechanisms to support our financial needs. Educational Services has been working throughout this entire school year to develop a multi-year instructional plan. It's in its final stages right now. It outlines the process for adopting standards-based K-12 curriculum, how we'll use data and assessment with our students, developing culturally competent and responsive instructional expectations, supports, and practices, how we'll provide professional learning, and how we'll use technology for teaching and learning in the years ahead. That plan includes not only the goals, but the supporting initiatives, the staff responsibilities, and the funding sources. And when Educational Services is completed with the fine details, we'll share with you a final copy of that. Human Resources and Support Services has been working with our employee associations to negotiate contracts that meet both the financial constraints of the district and address the competitive compensation that will allow us to attract and retain employees in the district. And Business Services has been very busy leading our analysis of the various funding mechanisms for all of our expenditures. Currently, we're benefiting from the county's approval of the enhancement millage, and we appreciate them for that, as well as a previous approval of sinking fund revenue. We've also analyzed our various costs and the means by which large expenditures can be funded. So, for example, currently buses are funded through the general fund, which includes the revenue from the enhancement millage. It is also possible or permitted to pay for buses through a bond if approved by voters, but buses are not an allowable expenditure from a sinking fund. Replacement of existing infrastructure within our schools and our buildings are currently expensed through the sinking fund, but major renovations might require a different source of funding in the future, such as a bond. Ensuring our district is accessing and using the most appropriate funding source for necessary expenditures will assist us in meeting our strategic goals as we move ahead. For the next school year, we have five areas that we'll be working on. The first one is ensuring that we continue to work on the attraction and retention of employees through the creation and implementation of a talent development system, through the work of human resources. They've really worked hard on that, and will continue that work, but we want to put a special focus next year on staff feeling valued, appreciated, respected, and supported in the work that we do. We want to ensure that our facility utilization aligns with our enrollments and our instructional plan. We want to make sure the food quality options that appeal to our students are there, as well as maintaining the required federal health and nutrition guidelines. Ensure that we have efficient and dependable transportation and start the year off much more successfully, I might say. And then increase the number and variety of communication and marketing tools we use with the district. The graphic you see up on the screen shows the two components for this year related specifically to the instructional plan, which is making sure we know what we want to address in terms of supporting students and how we want to address instruction, because we want to make sure that if we're going to then, as a next phase, look at our facilities, that our facilities serve the instructional plan that we have, so we don't go backwards and say, oops, we should have thought of, but we know exactly what we're trying to get done instructionally, and thereby we make sure our facilities support that need. In addition, we have been a declining enrollment school district for many, many years, and we need to make sure that we're not running more facilities than we need to relative to the number of students we'll have. So based on the goal for next year, ensuring the facility utilization aligns with our enrollments and instructional plan, we'll need to engage our students, our parents, our community members, our businesses, local governments, as well as our employees and the Board of Education, in a process that would examine the current use of our facilities and then make decisions about how we want to invest in our facilities going forward. That process would include learning about current use, thinking about the future and the use of our facilities in the future, and then determining the number of schools or buildings that we will need, the grade configurations we desire, and any necessary renovations, additions, or closures of school buildings or buildings that aren't schools. The work will also include thinking about the timing of any changes and developing timelines for those actions. In other words, we all have to get together to figure out how we want to invest in our facilities moving forward. And since our schools are here to serve our students, and they're an investment in our community, it's important that we go through a process that is inclusive of our community when we examine those. So I'm recommending a process much like we did with the strategic plan that would take the time for everybody to learn, think, and determine what we'd like to do as we think about investment in our facilities moving forward. So if next year's goals include aligning our facilities to our needs, this strategic planning update lets everybody know that I really believe we need to start that thinking now, start sharing that with our public, and then start letting people know we'll be inviting them into a process to have that deeper dialogue. So it's awareness at this point from my perspective, and I know the Finance Committee will share some more information later. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number 263.17, Citizen Comments Agenda Items Only. Anyone want to speak on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Item number 264.17, the Consent Agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move to accept.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Ms. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 265.17, Parent Advisory Committee, PACC, for the Special Education. Mr. Hallman.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. Today, I come to introduce to you Darlene Bowlen, who has served as our representative on the Wayne RISA Parent Advisory Council. The Parent Advisory Council, or PAC, as it's more commonly referred to, is a group of parents that meets once a month with staff from Wayne RISA and local special education directors. They provide their perspective and guidance on children's needs in terms of the special education services offered in Wayne County. The PAC advises special educators on matters dealing with curriculum, accommodations, procedures, and many other concepts to provide opportunity for children with special needs. Mrs. Bowlen has served in this capacity for the past 11 years and has graciously agreed to continue in her role. With the Board's approval, I will process the paperwork necessary for Mrs. Bowlen to continue as our PAC representative. In closing, I'd like to take a moment to thank Darlene for her many years of service to the students with different needs and to applaud her willingness to graciously continue as our representative.
Thank you, Mr. Hallman. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion?
All I know is that she has done a fabulous job, and she will continue doing a fabulous job. She is really dedicated to this.
Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you, and thank you for doing such a good job. Moving on to item number 266.17, Review and Approval Human Resource Items, and I believe we have two items on the agenda this evening. Mrs. Bow.
Thank you, Madam President. The first agenda item is, tonight I had the pleasure of recommending for your approval the placement of Ms. Jeannie Downe as the supervisor of our Transportation Department. Jeannie's been employed by the district since 2004, serving as an elementary principal secretary, an accounting clerk in the business office, a billing and a payroll secretary in the Transportation Office, and most recently is our control operator with responsibility for district-wide payroll. Jeannie's experiences throughout the district in her years of providing support in the Transportation Department uniquely qualify her for this position, but most importantly, it is Jeannie's ability to build relationships and quickly reach resolution in challenging situations that has led to this recommendation.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
I move.
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion?
Again, Jeannie will do an excellent job. I had a chance to work with her for a lot of years at Stevenson. She's a very hard worker and very dedicated to the school district.
Anyone else? Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Madam President, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm also requesting board ratification of the tentative agreement that was reached with the Wayne Westland Central Office Administrators Association, or WCOA, on April 28th, 2017. The terms and conditions of the proposed two-year successor agreement will help improve our ability to attract and retain central office administrators in two ways. The first is the attraction of staff. Steps 1 and 1.5 will be eliminated, increasing the starting salary for all classifications. There will be no step movement other than those members on Step 1 and 1.5 who advance to the new Step 1. The range of increases in compensation for these impacted members is between 4.7% to 7.5%. Secondly, the retention of staff. Retention bonuses for districts' years of services range between 1% to 2.25% of base salary for each year of service, up to a five-year of service cap. Members at the bottom steps will receive the higher percentage, the 2.25, in an effort to provide a greater benefit to those members who have been frozen on the bottom steps. This bonus will be paid in the form of two off-schedule bonus payments each year of the two-year agreement. WCOA members ratified the tentative agreement on May 11th. If ratified by the Board of Education tonight, the agreement will be effective upon the expiration of the current WCOA agreement, or July 1st, 2017, and will expire on June 30th, 2019.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Cox. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you.
Item number 267.17, Review and Approval Business Services and Finance Items. Mr. Larson Schuyler.
Thank you, President Walker. Tonight, we have the renewal of the Aramark Food Service Contract. In 2014, the Board of Education approved a five-year contract with Aramark Food Service to manage the district's food service program. Aramark provides management services. All non-management staff are district employees and members of Local 4. Department of Education requires the district to review and reauthorize contract annually. This contract was reviewed by the District Food Service Management Bid Evaluation Committee and recommended for renewal. This is the third year of a five-year contract. Terms of the contract provide for annual inflation increases of the lower of 3% or the Consumer Price Index for urban consumers' food away-from-home index as of December. And the increase for 2017-18 is 2.41 on general and administrative fees and 2.35 on management fees.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
I have a question.
All right. Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Second.
Supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Mrs. Madell?
I have a question about federal government, because they just changed and did a rollback on some of the regulations. How is that going to affect our food service program for our students?
Rollback is, I asked our food service about this, and they haven't done away with everything. You just don't have to proceed further with, for instance, like all, like whole wheat, spaghetti, and those type of things. So it's not something that's going back to the way it was before, where you could have french fries and everything like that.
Tater tots.
Yeah, so everything still has to be baked, no grease, you know, greasy food, so it's basically what it is as of this time.
So in other words, going forward, the legislation was going to change, and kind of like the auto industry, where it was going to, regulations were going to move up, but now it's just flatlined?
Yeah, you had to, each year, you had to increase the whole wheat, the grains, and so forth.
Okay.
Right now, it's, I mean, as I understand it from food service, it's basically, like I say, as-is, nothing is proceeding forward.
Okay.
And not going back, either.
Not going back, either. And that's why I want to make sure we're not going backwards.
No.
Not that I don't like tater tots, but, you know, it's not a food group on its own, either.
Neither is ketchup.
Well, not according to President Reagan. And each year, I have to disclose that my daughter works for Aramark, not this year. She no longer works for Aramark, so I no longer have to disclose, so I'm free and clear.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Has there ever been any kind of poll taken or discussion with our students as to them really enjoying and liking the food that's provided to them?
Yeah, actually, the last two years, we've done surveys, especially of the after-school meal program, and it was sent to all participants in the program. Did it, the first year that we implemented the after-school meal program, we did it first semester, then second semester, and based on that, we made some improvements, and then we also surveyed again. What we did this past year is, I met Aramark and myself, we met with the student council, student government, and we reviewed, you know, some new selections that we're going to offer, and we also took input and feedback from them, and we meet with them, well, we're supposed to meet with them monthly due to an issue with a person, a vice president at Aramark, that was going to lead that discussion, actually had a car accident, so she was unable to start it, but we started that last month, where we meet with both student councils. We have a chef, a visiting chef, that goes in and does test tastings, and some of those items, based on the input from the students, go onto the selections.
So you mentioned after-school, that also is during-school lunchtime, same food being served?
Mm-hmm, yeah, same food.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 268.17, Review and Approval Wayne County Regional Educational Services Agency, Wayne RISA, their budget resolution. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, you have in your packet, this is an annual requirement from Wayne RISA that local boards of education review their budget. It starts on page 30 and goes through page 43. It's inclusive of their Q&amp;A document, and what they require is a Board of Education's review, and if you look at the reservation, resolution, rather, you are actually saying that you approve it, and you can add comments if you'd like to, and we share those, and I know the Board has occasionally done that. The resolution's on page 43. Or you can say that you are disapproving of it and then would share any specific items that you are not approving of. So you could also approve it with no comment as well, so you don't have to read the resolution, but certainly need a motion relative to those two.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, supported by Mrs. Madison?
I have a question.
Okay. Any discussion, Dr. Weaver?
In earlier discussions around the table, there were some funds that we were hoping that would be released to the district. Has that been resolved or moved in any way? Has that been resolved or moved in any way?
So you are speaking about page 34, which is the Act 18 funds.
Yes.
We did receive extra payment for transportation of students who ride special ed routes this year. We also received that last year, and we received payment both years. I'm assuming we've received it already, but if not, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $700,000, and it's meant to reimburse for cost. It was done on a per-pupil basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you.
President Walker, if I might add, I should have also added, that's not unique to us, Dr. Weaver, that's throughout the entire county, so every district in the county for all of their students. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 269.17, resolution to consider designation of electorial representative for the June 5, 2017 Wayne County RISA by annual elections. So the Wayne RISA Board, the Board itself, has two available seats that are coming up. One is, one, only one incumbent is running for a seat, and that's Mary Blackman, and the open seat is for retiring Ken Berlin. But before I get to that, let's discuss who's going to be the representative to carry our vote back. I would suggest, and we can decide, Carol already, or Mrs. Medel already attends all the meetings at Wayne RISA, so she would already be available, and the meeting is June 5.
June 5.
Which is our regular board meeting also. So we would need at this time, so nominations for someone who's going to be the actual representative, and we also need an alternate. So at this time, I'll take a motion for that.
So moved.
So you're going to move that?
For Carol.
Okay. And do we have any support for Carol?
Support.
Okay.
Support for her to carry our vote back?
To be the representative to carry the vote back. We're going to vote here, and then whatever our answer is, she's going to take it back and present it.
Okay.
Certification. Do you still sit on the RISA Board?
No, I'm on the WACOSPA Board.
Okay.
Which is the Wayne County Association of School Boards. The Wayne RISA Board is the school board like ours that represents RISA. Okay, so any discussion on that? Do we need to do a roll call vote for?
Do you need to add an alternate to that?
Yeah, do you want to do it as a separate vote, or you want to do it all in one vote?
We could do it all together. I'm kind of with it for everyone else's.
Do we have anyone who wants to serve as the alternate?
I think Mr. Buckaloo would be a great alternate.
Because I think he attends the meetings with Mrs. Medel, so you're right. Okay, so we have, and so you want to redo your motion to cover both of them?
Yep, so moved to cover Carol and Tom.
Okay, and that was, you, Mrs. Madison was the, you gave the motion, who supported it?
Me.
Okay, and Mrs. Hines. Can I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
And Madam President, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Okay, so now what we have to vote on is who are we going to give our vote to? And like I said, there's two open seats. We have one incumbent running, which is Mary Blackman, and everyone had received their, a short bio of everyone that was running in their package. We also have Ms. Annie Carter, who is actually in the audience today, she's running, and Mrs. Danielle Thunderberg. I, this is very hard for me, because I have served on the Board with both young ladies, and they both are amazing women, and they both would do remarkable, do a remarkable job in the position, so it's hard for me. But as a Board, we're going to come together and we'll decide who we're going to send. I would suggest that Mrs. Blackman, because she's already an incumbent, and she's been doing this, and she's been doing it for a long time, that she keep her seat, but whatever the Board desires and whatever your motion is, is, I am good with it.
Can I say one thing?
You sure can.
Yes, I also agree with Ms. Blackman and Ms. Annie Carter, because we do a lot in the school district, we go to a lot of events, and they're really supportive in our congressional district. Ms. Annie Connor was the chair of the 13th Congressional District for Education, and we had a lot of meetings, we did a lot of programs to help the students throughout the whole congressional district, so they're all, they're pretty active. And Ms. Thunderberg as well, I see a lot of MSAB events, MSAB events, so all three are very active, and I'm really impressed with all three candidates.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Could I make the motion at this time that we support Mrs. Blackman and Ms. Carter as representatives?
Support, yeah. So we have a motion by Dr. Weaver, we have support by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion?
You weren't supposed to be here.
That's right. You threw, but it's all good. No gasping for air over there. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to item number 270.17, Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Medel?
Okay, as required by federal law, you all received a copy of the monthly report for our Head Start program that meets over at Stottlemyre, and they are in the process of interviewing parents and getting paperwork together for fall enrollments, so anybody out there who qualifies and is interesting, interested, we have our two programs, one at Stottlemyre and the other one is at Walker Winter. So get your, get your application in there, get your paperwork together, come over and have fun. They're great kids, great staff, want to see out there, and we're going to be in the parade again this year. We seem to be getting trophies every year, so it's kind of neat, and the kids really get excited out there in their little T-shirts advertising our program. We usually get a bus with a big banner on the side that says Head Start with the phone number, so we'll be out there for the parade on the last Sunday of the month.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. Moving on to item number 271.17, Finance Committee Reports. We only have one this evening, and Dr. Weaver is going to give it.
Thank you, Madam President. The following is a summary of the minutes of Finance Committee meeting of April 24, 2017. The committee met on Monday, April 24, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. Board members present were Tom Buckaloo, David Cox, and Fred Weaver. District employees in attendance were Michelle Harmala, John Albrecht, Kelly Bold, Dave Cowmeyer, Rhonda Lyons, Tony Spiezak, and Jim Larson Schidler. Paul Wills from Plant Moran Cressa also attended as a guest presenter. The meeting was held to present and discuss the process of collaborative planning for the district's future based on the Strategic Plan 2016 to 2020, to ensure facility utilization aligns with enrollments and the instructional plan. Paul Wills presented a PowerPoint presentation on the why, what, and how of strategic capital planning. The entire Board was provided a copy with this PowerPoint presentation in their Friday, May 5 update packet. Michelle Harmala led a discussion describing a process for engaging our stakeholders in the determination of how we can invest in our facilities to save our students and provide, to serve our students. We don't need to save them, but we need to serve them. And provide the programs and services our community desires for our students. Based on the strategic plan, the timeline, and process for long-range collaborative planning involving all stakeholders was reviewed and discussed. The entire Board was provided a copy of Dr. Harmala's presentation in their Friday, May 5 update packet. With your permission, Madam President, the Finance Committee recommends the Board approve the following motion. The Board of Education supports the administration's plan for addressing the 1718 facility utilization goal as written in Strategic Plan 2016 through 2020, including collaborative engagement of Wayne Westland stakeholders and capital planning support by Plant Moran Cressa.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Cox. Any discussion, or Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Larson Schidler, or perhaps Dr. Harmala. First question is, what's our student enrollment this year, and what do you expect it to be in 2020?
This year, it's approximately 11,400, and then actually in 2021, somewhere between 96 and 9800.
Is that a, is that a downward trend that you expect to see throughout the next decade?
Yeah, we've, well, we've been losing about 300 students a year. The only year that we did not lose students was when Inkster, the school district of Inkster dissolved into our district.
But with that one exception, the last five or six years, it's been 300 down, 300 down, 300 down.
Yeah.
So we're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 students where we've lost in the last five years, last six years.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In terms of a percentage, what's the average student enrollment in our buildings?
We're at a 66% utilization rate, and you should be at about 85%.
Okay, so some of our schools have more than 67%, 66% enrollment, but then some have less than that.
Correct. To get the average, you'll have some a little more and some a little less.
Some down as low as the low 50%?
Um, yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. So I've seen some estimates of renovation for our various buildings, and obviously, if one building is going to have more work done, then that building is going to have a higher price tag, but the numbers that I saw were per square foot.
Right.
And that would be irrespective of how much work was to be done, so that some of our buildings per square foot are going to be less expensive and others more expensive to do renovations on. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Depending on what needs to be done.
Okay, and I've seen those, those figures, and as, as has the Finance Committee and everybody in administration, or at least the Cabinet. Do you put a lot of trust in those numbers?
Um, yeah, I do. They're between $50 and $70 square foot. Again, it's going to depend on what needs to be done, and we have some buildings that need more work, more costly work than others.
So if we came to you with a recommendation that we would do this work on that building, you could pretty much give us a pretty good estimate of what that was going to cost.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We've done our homework.
We do have estimates for all the buildings.
Okay, well, those were my questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Hi.
Sally, please.
I just wanted to know if we could figure out, list some, maybe some of the reasons why enrollment is declining?
Yeah, birth rates, competition, charter schools, school of choice. You know, the birth rate is continually declining.
And that's within the whole state, isn't it?
It's within the whole state, and especially in this county. You know, we have the, the information on that going back to the 50s, so it's markedly down.
Okay. Mr. Cox?
I would just like to comment that this was actually the first meeting that I was able to attend as a member of the Finance Committee, and I believe that this, the way that Dr. Harmala is approaching this with a collaborate, with an intent to collaborate with the greater community as to how these changes can be made is absolutely the right way to proceed. The 85 percentile that we're really shooting for, that's really the bottom. You know, we don't want to be at 85 or below 85, we want to be above, and in addition to that, many of our resources and our infrastructure don't meet our Strategic Plan guidelines, so I'm very much in support of this, and I hope my colleagues support it. I think this is the right way to move forward, and it's not too soon to have the community involved, so.
Thank you. There's still, okay, go ahead.
Just one question, too, because I am concerned about the age of the buildings and the infrastructure, because I know some of the buildings, you know, have plumbing problems, roofs, and there's so many buildings, and when you combine that with the use of percentage, like how will we determine, how to figure that out? Because that is concerning when you have, like, you know, the expenses of maintaining certain buildings and not having a lot of children to fulfill those space, like.
Um, not sure I understand the question.
Oh, just how to determine, like, what the, you know, the next plan or strategy would be, like, would you decide, like, okay, well, we have less kids in this building, we won't spend as much money on this one, you know, to where the finances would go?
Dr. Harmala is, she looks like she's.
Yeah, I can't see you down there. Sorry.
She's going to answer for you.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's okay. So part of the engagement of the community is to look at all of our facilities and to say, for example, there are lots of ways you can configure schools. Right now, the district is configured with K to four buildings, five, six buildings, seven, eight buildings, and then high school's nine to 12. There, prior to the change that was made in 1011, your elementaries looked different than that. So depending on how we want to configure, the grades would depend then, so you first talk about what do we want to serve students, then what schools do we need to do that, then you get to what buildings would serve that need. Either would they serve that need with renovation, with some minor updates, or would we need to do a complete overhaul of something? But that's sort of the last question. The first question is, what do we need to do to serve our kids? And that would be a lot of dialogue to get to that, because the configurations can look different, and then they would allow you to use different numbers of facilities, but it would depend on what the community chooses. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to renew the remark that I made in the Finance Committee when we discussed this. First of all, I am in support of it, but I want to make very sure that we're not putting money into buildings that, that may be abandoned in the future, and I would ask that there be a lot of tight control on that. I understand emergencies or whatever, but putting a million dollars into a school that may be sold in two years is, is not my idea of good management.
Thank you. At this time, we still have a motion on the floor. I'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 272.17, Superintendent Report. Dr. Harmala?
Thank you, President Walker. I have a few items to share tonight. First, we have the Revenue Estimating Conference coming up this week for the state. This event marks the start of the collaboration and debate that will finalize the state's budget for the next fiscal year. We believe an increase is necessary to ensure the quality implementation of our requirements and our programs and services. The proposals from the Governor, the House, and the Senate that included an increase in per-pupil funding do have different effects on our district, and since the Revenue Estimating Conference is the key determinant to finally, finalizing that budget, we really need to wait and see what gets moved, changed, traded, debated, before we would know really what our foundation allowance would be for next year. But as you recall, Wayne Westland is currently funded at the state's lowest per-pupil allowance. We're not alone in that category, but it wasn't always the case for Wayne Westland. So I want to keep you posted on the process, but I think it's important for everybody to understand that when the state does this work, it's part of the democratic process, and so if people have thoughts or perspectives, I would really encourage them to reach out to our legislators and share their views, and then we will bring a budget, a proposed budget to you June 26, in hopes that all the details will have been nailed down by that time. This week, past week, on Wednesday, we had an audit of our at-risk thirty-one A funds. Four members of the Michigan Department of Education came to Wayne Westland to conduct an onsite review. The Department of Education is charged with making random routine reviews, and then they report back to the legislature what their findings are. They reviewed by gathering evidence to demonstrate how we are using our funds to support our at-risk students. The focus of the funds are making sure students are reading at grade level by grade three and being college and career-ready upon graduation. The Michigan Department of Ed spent the entire day meeting with and hearing from our stakeholders, our principals, administrators, teachers, social workers, occupational therapists, and parents. They asked a series of questions of those stakeholders and then held a meeting where they reported their findings in the afternoon to the administration. Celebrations, they were very impressed with the standard-based grading approach that is taking place at Wayne Memorial High School. They applauded Franklin Middle School's efforts to help students who have encountered trauma. The Optimum program was spoken of very highly. Tinkham's increasing graduation rates were celebrated. The intervention block at PD Graham, the PLC process used across the district, and specifically our teacher-to-teacher professional development process. The recommendations were to increase our multi-tiered system of supports, which is essentially how we intervene early with students. And what they wanted us to do with that is to increase our celebrations for the students who meet their intervention benchmarks and move forward. They want us to work on capturing the academic achievement gains for the students participating in the Optimum program. We're calling that program evaluation more broadly. We're evaluating many of our programs in the district, because what we're looking for is what we call kind of affectionately ROI, or what's the return on our investment, so that we make sure that we are being most effective and efficient at the same time. And they also thought we should create a principal-to-principal program for new principals, like we have our teacher-to-teacher program. And finally, the last part of their report is required changes, and we have absolutely no required changes to make. So that was a very nice celebration. I'd like to thank all of our staff and parents who participated in that audit. It was a day-long event. And particularly, I'd like to thank Donna Lockery, our Executive Director of Federal and State Programs. Donna's experience and expertise certainly ensured that those audit findings would be as stellar as they were. So thank you to Donna and the entire team. I'd also like to share some congratulations. We are a learning organization, and when we talk about our vision in its most simplistic form, one of the things we say is, "We expect student learning and growth through adult learning and growth." So learning happens every day, and it's important for all of us. And I'd like to congratulate Kevin English. He's one of our teachers, who serves also as a school board trustee in his home community. And Mr. English received the Award of Merit at the recent Wayne County Association of School Boards M A S B Award Ceremony and Dinner. Additionally, I'd like to congratulate Melody Hines, Sally Madison, and Carol Medel for their learning achievements this year. Secretary Hines was honored by the Michigan Association of School Boards for her attainment of Level One certification and the Award of Merit. Trustee Madison earned her Liberal Arts Degree through Schoolcraft Community College. And Vice President Medel was honored by the Michigan Association of School Boards for the attainment of the Master Platinum Award, the highest individual achievement for school board members. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for demonstrating lifelong learning. And last of all, as we come to the year end, I always feel compelled to ask our students to think ahead, think before you act. It's an exciting time of year. I'd like to ask our seniors to finish the year academically strong and, above all, in a safe manner. They all have great futures ahead of them, and we want this to be the start of something wonderful. And to all of our other students, keep your focus. You have a few more weeks than our seniors do, but I know that they'll do wonderful things and accomplish great things if they can stay focused through the end of the school year. So thank you, President Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala. Moving on to item number two seven three point one seven, Citizen Comments, Non-Agenda Items.
Good evening.
Hi, can I please have your name?
Oh, Annie Carter. I got a, you know, my goal was to come and introduce myself to you tonight. I had no idea that there was going to be a vote being taken, because I think if you're going to vote for a candidate, you must see them and know who they are. I've served on Detroit Public School Board for more than ten years, and I've been an employee of Detroit Public School, as well as a volunteer parent. I served on the Michigan Association of School Board for two years, and I worked with the Legal Trust Funds and other programs, the Governance Program Committee and the Legislation, and also the Bylaws Resolution and Policy Committee. I've done it all. So I feel that I have a lot to bring to Wayne RISA, and I would like to continue to work with the local boards in Wayne County. Carol and I are the only two board members sitting there at eight-thirty in the morning. And you have the question, so why isn't there any other board members attending these meetings? Well, you got to think about it. Eight-thirty, and don't stop at the Speedway to get a cup of coffee, because public comments will be over by the time you walk in the door, you know? And they don't have public comment anywhere else on the agenda. I've worked with Ms. Walker, with the Wayne County Association of School Board, and on the executive. I've worked with Melanie Hines, with the Thirteenth Democratic Party, and I'm just one of those person that's all over. And if I am truly getting all the, if I get all the vote that I need to be on the Wayne RISA Board, this won't be my last visit. This may be my first visit, but it won't be my last. I pledge that to you, that I would be back at your meeting to hear your concern. And my goal on the Wayne RISA Board is to bring about information, a magazine, or a newspaper quarterly, talking about what we're doing in Wayne County. I believe years ago, we had such a thing, and somehow, all of that went to the waistline. I would like to bring it back, because as my last two months have gone from one school board meeting to another school board, from Roseport to Southgate, and tomorrow, I'm going to Wyandotte. So I'm just doing it all, because I think you need to know who are, who you're voting for. But there's so much that I want to bring forward to the Wayne RISA Board. Bring us up back into this age, where we are in the two thousand seventeen year, not back in nineteen eighty-one, when some people had started that, you know, thirty-six years ago, who is serving. And just to have the relationship that we need with our school boards in Wayne County. And again, I would like to thank you, and thank you, and thank you. It was, you just overwhelmed me. I mean, I got tears running out of my eyes. And Mark over here, he's one of my colleagues that used to work within our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's Bill.
I thought he was going to have something to say.
It's just Bill. That was it. That was your fifteen seconds of glory, honey. Eat it up.
Hi, can I please have your name?
My name is Deborah Archer, and this is my daughter, Sharita Archer.
Hi, my name is Sharita Archer. And I have a daughter that attends Wayne Memorial High School, and she's in a, she's a freshman, and she just started its school year last year in September. And it's been an ongoing situation that started in February of this year at Wayne Memorial High School with some juniors, I'm sorry, and seniors that had been, you know, ongoing with the picking and the, I want to say, the bullying. And it had, it has been brought to attention of the Wayne Memorial High School Principal, Assistant Principal, and, you know, so forth, even with the teachers. And like, I have a couple of conflict resolution contracts that were signed with the students that were promised not to ongoing with the bullying with the freshmen. And they are eighteen years old. I would also like to mention that, you know, and that is illegal when, you know, my daughter is fourteen, and on her birthday, okay, sorry. And on my birth, and on her birthday, May second, two weeks ago, she was attacked. She was, her and my niece and a friend of theirs were walking down the hall, which is also on the filming at the schools that were being taped, cameras. And, you know, and she was walking down the hall, and I guess they were going to tell, you know, because, you know, they always say, if you have any problems, please come to the principal's office and, you know, direct your problems to the principal. Well, that's what she was doing, taking the steps. And she were ignoring the words that were being called to her every day. And this has been going on since February of this year, two thousand seventeen. And I just would like to, you know, I know this bullying situation, you know, and not only in the state of Michigan, but, you know, in other states as well, the United States. It is against the law. So many children are losing their lives. So many children are, you know, like I say, being, taking their own lives for being bullied and not stepping up and being forthcoming and telling an adult, or not even their parent, you know, a close neighbor, a friend, or anything that will, you know, come to the, come to the direction, so this can be brought to the table. And so when the, this had happened, I know that my daughter and the other group of the students that were, you know, fighting the seniors and the juniors, they, two of them were not suspended.
You have three minutes to speak, but what I will have you to do is if you wait until after we have the meeting, I'll have someone come and speak to you, and we can talk to you one-on-one. And one, that way, you won't have everything out, because this is televised, so you don't want to put everything out onto your—
I am so—
So you're fine. So, no, you're fine. No, 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 no worries. But I'm going to have someone come talk to you one-on-one, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Oh, we appreciate you. You're more than welcome to come anytime, but I just, we usually give you three minutes to speak, and then I don't want you to go too far and put something out there you might not want everybody in Westland to know. Okay, that's fine. Fair enough. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item number two seven four point one seven, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. We'll start with Dr. Weaver.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. As I said earlier, I support the Strategic Plan as presented. There are some items in our district that we must address as we move forward. Whatever the outcomes of stakeholder groups, we must find a way, this board must find a way, and our administrators find a way to balance our decreasing student population with a fair and equitable way to treat our employees fairly. And I'm confident that we'll be able to come up with an accommodation that fits everyone. The next item I had, or the last item I had, under the heading of "No Ideas Crazy," or "Could Be Crazy But Not Stupid." I've been looking into charter schools, been looking into just parents in Wayne Westland that were losing their students to charter schools. And I'm sure there are great, I'm sure that people, the administrators know the reasons why. But what I'm coming up with on my limited basis is that they're unable to deal with the curriculum. And I'm just wondering, and I obviously don't need an answer tonight, but could there at some time be a two-tiered educational system in our district that, one, that it is now with the Common Core, and another one that, just put it in my words, teaches adding, subtracting, multiplying, and dividing, a two-tiered system of education that would, that a student can opt into, that may keep them from running to charter schools?
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Madison?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. Cox?
I would like to say, Ms. Blackman, you are not a secret here in our school district, and we certainly appreciate—
Ms. Carter.
No, no, Ms. Carter. Blackman's not here. Ms. Carter. I was, we have three excellent people. We're very fortunate, and we really couldn't make a mistake tonight. Thank you for all your work. I had the opportunity to attend the upward-bound presentation. And all I can say is that what an honor it was to be in that room and watch how those young people, not only what they have achieved in this school year, but how they conduct themselves in that atmosphere, and the support that they have, and frankly, the love that they have for their teachers. It was remarkable. It was a gift to me to be able to sit. Congratulations to all of them, and I can't wait to attend that next year. That's all I—
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. So two weeks ago, Ms. Hines and Mr. Cox and I had the privilege of attending the Michigan Association of School Boards Legislative Assembly in Lansing, Michigan. And it was in two parts. The first part was a panel discussion. And on that panel were four members. Two were Republicans, two were Democrats, two were senators, and two were representatives. And I just have to tell you that the, one of the senators and one of the representatives are individuals who represent this school district. Senator Hopgood and Representative Kozowski spoke about educational matters, and they spoke in a way that was very supportive of public education. And it would be wrong of me to pass up this opportunity to publicly thank both of those gentlemen for the kind, and I think the wise words, that they had to say, supporting public education. The second half of that presentation, well, there was a breakout session. Ms. Hines and I attended one, and I wrote it down, because I always forget these things, the adequacy study. If you're familiar with this, that was done a year, year and a half ago. And there were some flaws. I didn't understand what they were, but apparently, the perspective of that study wasn't as broad as it might otherwise be. So they're going to replicate it. They're going to do the same study, but with it from a different perspective, a second study. And the hope is that by January of next year, we're going to have some idea of what it takes to educate a student in a public school system. And of course, the key to that is that students are not all alike. There's no cookie cutter here. Some are the run-of-the-mill kid. Most of our kids are like that. Some of our kids are at risk. Some of our kids are struggling to learn English. It's their second language. Some have handicaps of one sort or another. And in each of these categories, the cost of educating that student is different, primarily because of the number of students being dealt with by a given teacher or aide. So anyway, I have high hopes that this study is going to give us something concrete and that it will further promote this idea that we need to adequately finance public education in this state. At this point, it's pretty, it's a pretty fair thing to say that we are not adequately funded. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. Another item, nineteen sixty-eight, when I came to work for this school district, it was called the Wayne District in those days, we couldn't hire teachers fast enough. All of our buildings, virtually all of our buildings were brand-new. When they were bursting at the seams, we brought portables onto sites and actually housed some of our students in trailers, just simply to have the room for all of those kids. We thought that was a terrible thing. Well, truth be told, it is much easier to deal with a district that is growing in student population than it is to deal with one that is losing population. And that's where we're at now. And that's the trend for the near future. We offer a quality education to the students of this school district. We do that now, and we will continue to do that. And if we're wise, if we're clever, if we use the resources that are available to us, if we reach out to members of the community and get their input and follow their suggestions, there's no reason why we can't continue to offer a quality education in spite— in spite of the decline in enrollments. There's no reason we might not, why we wouldn't even surpass the quality that we have now and give our students a truly world-class education. So as with my fellow board members, I do support the resolution to move forward with an examination of our programs, of our facilities, and in general, to continue pressing forward with Dr. Hamala's strategic plan, which has already had the, well, it's given us a blueprint. We now need input from a number of people, from students, from staff, most importantly, from the members of the community, who are going to have to assume any additional costs that these changes are going to or might entail. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
I'd like to thank the kids earlier today for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to congratulate Wayne Memorial Band. They're doing a fantastic job. Every week, or not every week, but every month when I come to these meetings, I see all the outstanding achievements that our students are doing, and it's awesome. Like, we went to the Employee Appreciation Breakfast with the students over at the Career Tech. They were showing how 75% of them, they get placed in jobs and positions. So the things that we're doing in the school is changing lives. One of the programs that's deepest in my heart is the Upward Bound Program. I am a product of Wayne Westland Schools from kindergarten to 12th grade. If it wasn't for Upward Bound, I wouldn't even be here today. They exposed me to opportunities I would have never seen. Right now, that grant, they're rewriting it, and it's, you know, we have to really pray that we keep that grant because, and hopefully, I pray that we can get it at John Glenn. I think we should have it in both schools because that is a tool to help, you know, get our kids to be accomplished, self-esteem, and it just makes us state-of-the-art. I am working with the Champions Program. We're trying to get Congressman John Conyers to come out to our schools. We need help. We need federal assistance. We need them to come and say, look, look what Wayne Westland is doing out here. So whatever I could do on that end is trying to bring them to us to help us with these programs. So we do need to continue those. We went to the JROTC. That was awesome. They're like top in the nation, about like 40 or something, or 10, top 10, the JROTC?
At Wayne High?
Yes. So it's really impressive. And all the scholarships our kids are getting, they're, I know Carol's got some things she's going to say a little bit later. There's another one, too, like with the spring concerts, it's that time of year. So, you know, we definitely want the people to come see our concerts, to play the Mary Poppins, so they're doing a good job with that. And they had the Family Resource Fair over at Jefferson Barnes. That was really nice. I like when we have the community come together because there are a lot of families hurting. And when you know what type of resources that are provided, that does help families out. So, you know, they do a really good job at ProNet here. So that's all I have to say. Oh, and I'll be with Mr. Buckaloo tomorrow. We're going to be going to Lansing again. They have another conference that we'll be attending, and it's going to be called...
Communication?
Yes. The communication with your district. So that's one thing I do like about this district. They give us opportunities to learn, to learn, to be better school board members. And then what we do is we take that back to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mrs. Madell?
A lot of what Mrs. Hines had to say, a lot of things that I have also attended this last month. I am so proud of all of our students, whether they are high school kids, middle school, upper elementary, elementary, even our preschoolers. Our kids work really hard for the achievements that they are capable of making on a daily basis. And I am so proud of our staff here in helping them achieve their goals. Like I said, I got a chance to go to the JROTC. Both of our programs are excellent in helping our students with leadership skills. If you go to our school district calendar, you're going to see a lot of events that have been posted on there coming up. This is the time when we have our spring fairs, spring carnivals. I know that there are three on Friday night this week, so a lot of PTA/PTO meetings going on and working on planning that. We couldn't do those kinds of things for our kids without the parents in our community, without our businesses helping to support what our kids are doing, too. It takes a village to raise a kid, more in these times. So with that said...
Thank you, Mrs. Madell.
Move forward. Oh, I forgot. Construction Tech, I want to make sure I mentioned this. They're having their open house on Thursday, the 18th, and it's at 3 o'clock. This is right next door to last year's house. And I know when I took Mr. Cox around the school district, I made sure I'd stopped here. Luckily, the ground was still frozen because it was a little muddy on a construction site. And the kids are so proud of what they have accomplished over there. So come on out and join the kids. They will take you on a tour. They'll even point out exactly what they did on the house, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. As always, I want to thank the pledge kids, Christian King and Jake LeRiding, for coming. I just want to say that graduations is coming up, and I just want to say congratulations to all our graduating seniors. And this is what this, these next couple of weeks that we're going into with all the awards, the graduations, that was, makes us sitting on this board worthwhile. So I just want to say congratulations to the class of 2017 and that we look forward to giving you your diplomas on May, or June 3rd. And I also want to say thank you to each and every one of you for taking time out your schedule to come and sit through our meeting. We don't take you being here lightly, and we appreciate everything that you have to say and just you sitting here and taking the time. And at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Mrs. Hines. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Okay, I'll hang on to it till next month.